So let's go ahead and get started here. So we've got a special legislation evening with the budget. So first, let's go ahead and stand up and say the pledge of allegiance on the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the evening that everybody's been looking forward to, you know, for three months, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, counsel, let's let Mr. Stamp introduce our budget, and if you guys want to come on up too. That'd be great.
Yeah, Caitlin, you want to come up? Oh, no, please. Oh, yes, yes.
She's all set up there, you can see.
We have disbursements to approve.
Do we?
There we go.
Where's Jess where I need her? Okay.
She seems to be pretty firm at her present seat.
Um, let's see. Okay, um, all right, let's start off with the agenda. The agenda's before us, is there any changes or?
Additions or deletions.
Yeah, additions or, delicious.
Delicious.
It's been a long day, yes.
No additions or deletions.
It'd be phenomenal.
Okay, that would be phenomenal. Any, everybody good? Okay.
They were great.
They are great, okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that this be accepted as unanimous consent, okay? Disbursements, same thing, any deletions, corrections? Okay, all right, hearing none, the disbursements be accepted as unanimous consent, okay? Now we can go ahead and get started on tonight's legislation. Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and start us off? Do we need to read anything, or?
Well, I can, first, are you going to do the PowerPoint first?
Yeah, we can.
We can do that.
Yep, yep, it's okay, we'll do that.
Okay, so counsel, thank you.
Yeah.
I, there was a lot of hard work that went into drafting the FY25 proposed balanced budget, we're here tonight, want to thank the council for your cooperation and support over the last number of months. I also want to thank Martha Sparks and Caitlin and Jessica Morris for their help, it was a team effort. I just want to take a couple minutes to say a few things, and I'll hand it off to Martha.
Sure.
The budget, the proposed FY25 general fund budget amount will be $163,970,000. And I thought maybe the first thing to do is talk a little bit about where we are in the FY24 budget as we move into the 25 budget. And I'm happy to tell you, and Martha will reiterate it possibly, we are on course to meet the target of the FY24 budget, which will wrap up June 30th of this year. That budget that we're currently in focused on a three-point strategy, the three P strategy, addressing personnel, processes, and projects, as we plan on continuing that in FY25. And so it's been a success so far. Some of the capital projects that we have completed in our near completion is the commencement of the airport modernization project, the completion of the gymnasium and pickleball courts at the community center, soon to be, soon we'll see the completion of the Talbot County Health Department at Achievement Park, we're looking forward to a ribbon cutting at that facility in June, capital improvements to the wastewater treatment plant in St. Michael's, and sanitary district through extension of sewer services to reduce reliance on septic systems, enhancements to the Department of Corrections and courthouse, road repairs, upgrades, and resurfacing across the 370 miles of county roadways. On average, our superintendent of roads and the team out there directly and through contracting is addressing about 40 to 50 miles a year, that's a combination of paving and tar and chipping. This is after a few years where road projects held stagnant for a while after the cutoff of the state highway user fees, so we're playing catch-up, but I'm happy to report with our superintendent they're making great progress on that. Additionally, we've updated our emergency operations plan from lessons learned from the pandemic in conducting certain classes for the public. So all this is just, I guess, an expression to you and the public that we create a budget in FY24, we're living to that budget, we're within the budget, and we are on course to meet the target. And so as we get ready to talk about 25, I think that's an important point to make. As we look at the FY25 budget, again, we're using this strategy of personnel processes and projects, and I think those three issues are very important, and for reasons that we've discussed before, we find ourselves in a very highly competitive workforce environment right now, not just Talbot County, but across the United States, and particularly here, especially for certain job functions like our dispatchers, paramedics, correctional officers, and others. So it's important that first we retain our staff, and secondly, be able to recruit. And so council has put money in the budget to be able to address those issues. Processes center around customer service, that's how can we work better to achieve customer service and leverage technology to better do that, and the budget does contain items to be able to do that. And then finally, capital projects, and in this next upcoming budget, we're looking at embarking on an expansion of the Talbot County Free Library, the renovation of the Chapel District Elementary School in Cordova, construction of an EMS station in northern part of the county, completion of the public safety complex in Easton, upgrade to our 911 computer aided dispatch system, and addressing ongoing efforts to extend sewer service to the Bay 100 area, as well as repair and construction of roads across the county as we just talked about. So it's ambitious, it addresses that three-point strategy, which I think was successful in 24, and will be in 25 as well. And then finally, overarching, our budget strategy, what's the magic behind our budget strategy? And the first point is, is that Talbot County has been successful in using conservative budgeting, and what does that mean? That means underestimating revenues and overestimating expenses, and making sure we stay within that lane, and that has served us well, we continue to do that in crafting the 25 budget. Additionally, we maintain a significant fund balance and low taxes, and Martha will talk about this in detail, but it's significant. I mean, as you know, the global economy is in flux, there's a lot of moving parts, Talbot County is positioned well with a good fund balance, the fund balance is in place for the uncertainties, but it's also in place to address certain liabilities or risks that we have that will grow in the future around issues of enterprise zones and economic development incentives to address property taxes to attract businesses to the area, and we don't know about emergencies, pandemics, other things we might have to address. Low taxes, Talbot County is obviously a beautiful place to live, you buy a property here, you pay the second lowest property tax in the state of Maryland, and if you happen to live here, your income tax, you pay the second lowest income tax in the state of Maryland, and that's something that I should say three times, because it's pretty amazing that we're able to do the things that we do with the money that we have and the support you give us. The budget does prioritize public safety and education, that's certainly a directive that's come through loud and clear, and this council has supported that, and the budget reflects that. I'm happy to report that we are completing a multi-year effort to ensure that we achieve staffing as outlined by our sheriff, our director of emergency services, our fire companies, and the budget, so over the last several years, we've increased staffing, we've upgraded facilities and equipment, and so this year brings us to a plateau that we hope that we level off now for a couple of years, but it has prioritized public safety. And then finally, education, this budget, as in the previous budget, addresses the state-funded mandate for our public schools, and it exceeds it, significantly exceeds the required formula funding. So with that, that just gives us an overview of how we got where we got today, and I want to hand it off to Martha, who has done an incredible job with Caitlin's support. Is there Martha?
Absolutely. Good evening, counsel. Staff is presenting, counsel, a balanced general fund budget of $1,600,000, $1,163,970, which includes property tax revenues at 2% over FY24 revenues in accordance with the county charter, one cent to the property tax rate as authorized by the voters of Talbot County in November 2020, and a four cent educational supplement to support Talbot County Public Schools budget initiatives. The funding to Talbot County Schools of $54.6 million is an increase of $3.65 million from their FY24 funding, and is $2.6 million above the local share funding, which is required by the state of Maryland. Capital improvement project funding, also identified as CIP funding, for Talbot County Public Schools includes $16.9 million for a capital project request for the Chapel District Elementary School renovations, and $1.5 million in additional CIP funding that council has appropriated for TCPS to determine the priority of its use against their CIP requests. For county operations in this budget, we have included 3% cost of living adjustment and one step for county employees. In this budget, the county has continued its investment in public safety by adding four public safety communication specialists, which the public will know as 911 operators, and one student.
Okay, now we can go ahead and get started on tonight's legislation. Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and start us off? Do we need to read anything, or?
Well, I can. First, are you going to do the PowerPoint first?
Yeah, we can.
We can do that.
We can do that.
Yep, yep, it's okay, we'll do that.
Okay, so counsel, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I, um, there was a lot of hard work that went into
Yep.
drafting the FY25 proposed balanced budget. We're here tonight. Want to thank the counsel for your cooperation and support over the last number of months. I also want to thank Martha Sparks and Caitlin and Jessica Morris for their help. It was a team effort. I just want to take a couple of minutes to say a few things and I'll hand it off to Martha.
Sure.
Uh, the budget, the proposed FY25 general fund budget amount will be $163,970,000. And I thought maybe the first thing to do is talk a little bit about where we are in the FY24 budget as we move into the 25 budget. And I'm happy to tell you, and Martha will reiterate it possibly, we are on course to meet the target of the FY24 budget, which will wrap up June 30th of this year. That, that budget that we're currently in focused on a three-point strategy. The three-piece strategy, addressing personnel, processes, and projects as we, we plan on continuing that in FY25. And so it's been a success so far. Some of the capital projects that we, we have completed in our near completion is the commencement of the airport modernization project, the completion of the gymnasium and pickleball courts at the community center. Soon to be, soon we'll see the completion of the Talbot County Health Department at the Achievement Park. We're looking forward to a ribbon cutting at that facility in June. Capital improvements to the wastewater treatment plant in St. Michael's and sanitary district through extension of sewer services to reduce reliance on septic systems. Enhancements to the Department of Corrections and courthouse, road repairs, upgrades, and resurfacing across the 370 miles of county roadways. On average, our superintendent of roads and the team out there directly and through contracting is addressing about 40 to 50 miles a year. That's a combination of paving and tar and chipping. This is after a few years where road projects held stagnant for a while after the, the cutoff of the state highway user fees. So we're playing catch-up, but I'm happy to report with our superintendent, they're making great progress on that. Additionally, we've updated our emergency operations plan from lessons learned from the pandemic in conducting certain classes for the public. So all this is just, I guess, an expression to you and the public that we create a budget in FY24, we're living to that budget, we're within the budget, and we are on course to meet the target. And so as we get ready to talk about 25, I think that's an important point to make. As we look at the FY25 budget, again, we're using this strategy of personnel processes and projects. And I think those three issues are very important. And for reasons that we've discussed before, we find ourselves in a very highly competitive workforce environment right now. Not just Talbot County, but across the United States, and particularly here. Especially for certain job functions like our dispatchers, paramedics, correctional officers, and others. So it's important that first we retain our staff, and secondly, be able to recruit. And so counsel has put money in the budget to be able to address those issues. Processes centered around customer service, that's how can we work better to achieve customer service and leverage technology to better do that. And the budget does contain items to be able to do that. And then finally, capital projects. And in this next upcoming budget, we're looking at embarking on an expansion of the Talbot County Free Library, the renovation of the Chapel District Elementary School in Cordova, construction of an EMS station in northern part of the county, completion of the public safety complex in Easton, upgrade to our 911 computer dispatch system, and addressing ongoing efforts to extend sewer service to the Bay 100 area, as well as repair and construction of road, roads across the county as we just talked about. So it's ambitious. It addresses that three-point strategy, which I think was successful in 24 and will be in 25 as well. And then finally, overwhelmingly, our budget strategy. What's, what's the magic behind our budget strategy? And the first point is, is that Talbot County has been successful in using conservative budgeting. And what does that mean? That means underestimating revenues and overestimating expenses and making sure we stay within that, that, that lane. And that has served us well. We continue to do that in crafting the 25 budget. Additionally, we maintain a significant fund balance and low taxes. And Martha will talk about this in detail, but it's significant. I mean, as you know, the global economy is in flux. There's a lot of moving parts. Talbot County is positioned well with a good fund balance. The fund balance is in place for the uncertainties, but it's also in place to address certain liabilities or risks that we have that will grow in the future around issues of enterprise zones and economic development incentives to, to address property taxes to attract businesses to the area. And we don't know about emergencies, pandemics, other things we might have to address. Low taxes. Talbot County is obviously a beautiful place to live. You buy a property here, you pay the second lowest property tax in the state of Maryland. And if you happen to live here, your income tax, you pay the second lowest income tax in the state of Maryland. And that's something that I should say three times because it's pretty amazing that we're able to do the things that we do with the money that we have and the support you give us. The budget does prioritize public safety and education. That's certainly a directive that's come through loud and clear, and this council has supported that, and the budget reflects that. I'm happy to report that we are completing a multi-year effort to ensure that we achieve staffing as outlined by our sheriff, our director of emergency services, our fire companies. And the budget, so, so over the last several years, we've increased staffing. We've, we've upgraded facilities and equipment. And so this year brings us to a plateau that we hope that we level off now for a couple of years, but it has prioritized public safety. And then finally, education. This budget, as, as in the previous budget, addresses the state-funded mandate for our public schools, and it exceeds it. Significantly exceeds the required formula funding. So with that, that just gives us, gives an overview of how we got where we got today. And I want to hand it off to Martha, who has done an incredible job with Caitlin's support. Is there Martha?
Absolutely. Good evening, counsel. Staff is presenting, counsel, a balanced general fund budget of $1,600, uh, $1,163,970,000, which includes property tax revenues at 2% over FY24 revenues in accordance with the county charter, one cent to the property tax rate as authorized by the voters of Talbot County in November 2020, and a four-cent educational supplement to support Talbot County Public Schools budget initiatives. The funding to Talbot County schools of $54.6 million is an increase of $3.65 million from their FY24 funding and is $2.6 million above the local share funding, which is required by the state of Maryland. Capital improvement project funding, also identified as CIP funding, for Talbot County Public Schools includes $16.9 million for a capital project request for the Chapel District Elementary School renovations and $1.5 million in additional CIP funding that counsel has appropriated for TCPS to determine the priority of its use against their CIP requests. For county operations in this budget, we have included 3% cost of living adjustment and one step for county employees. In this budget, the county has continued its investment in public safety by adding four public safety communication specialists, which the public will know as 911 operators, and one student resource officer supervisor. The county has also increased its appropriations to outside agencies by $1.2 million. Fund balance reserves will be used to make a significant investment in county infrastructure, capital improvement projects in the FY25 budget total $27.5 million. Fund balance reserves will also be used to invest $2.98 million for the purchase of vehicles and equipment, and equipment recognized in this budget as capital outlay. In our FY25 budget, we have a projected 12.3 increase in property tax revenues. A 19.3% increase in income tax revenues reflect a slight modification to budgeting our income tax revenues to align with the revenues realized over the last five years. These revenues are historically volatile for the county and must be carefully projected and monitored. These increases, combined with the projected increases of other local taxes, government revenues, and the non-recurring transfers of impact fees, along with the non-recurring transfers of fund balance reserves, bring us to an overall increase in revenues of 27.26%. Talbot County receives most of its revenues from property and income taxes. Together, they make up 81.1% of the county's operating revenues and 61.5% of the total FY25 budgeted revenues. The chart that you see in front of you is the total revenues for the county. It does not split out operating, but I think that that's significant to point out because those operating revenues are considered recurring revenues at various levels during the year, for each year. Recordation and transfer taxes are the next largest group of county revenues, contributing approximately 8.6 of the county's operating revenues. In FY21 and FY22, Talbot County experienced its highest levels of recordation and transfer tax revenues, but in FY23 and FY24, these revenues moved to more normal levels, and our FY25 budget projections are in alignment with those levels. These revenues, the recordation and transfer taxes, are heavily tied to activity in the real estate market in Talbot County. The county has historically made very conservative projections of its revenues due to the volatility of its income, recordation, and transfer tax revenues. This strategy of underbudgeting our revenues has enabled us to build healthy reserves. In this budget cycle, we've modified our approach by more accurately projecting revenues to be in alignment with the revenues the counties received over the last five years. This realignment shifts us, shifts us away from building reserves and shifts us to supporting our general fund operating expenditures with those recurring operating revenues. In November 2020, the voters in Talbot County supported an amendment to our charter that enabled one cent to be added to our property tax rate for the support of the county's expenditures related to public safety. This began in FY22 and will end with the FY26 budget. Counsel has an opportunity to create a ballot initiative to be included on the ballot in November 2024 if it chooses to ask citizens to vote to continue this valuable support to the county's public safety, which includes our sheriff's office, detention center, and Department of Emergency Services. The county has used the revenues from the one cent for enhancing public safety for 26 positions that include deputies, paramedics, EMTs, 911 operators, and a career ladder for the Department of Emergency Services and the inclusion of the sheriff's office, paramedics, and EMTs into the LEOPS retirement program and the Department of Correction Officers inclusion in the CORs retirement program. LEOPS and CORs are enhanced retirement programs through the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System for public safety employees. As you can see from the slide, each year, the county has used more than the revenues generated from the one cent to enhance public safety personnel serving the citizens and visitors of Talbot County. For our property taxes, our property tax rate, or projected property tax rate of .7910 for county-owned properties was calculated using property tax revenues 2% over FY24 revenues in accordance with our charter and with prior year revenue levels certified by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. It also includes an additional one cent to support the public safety, and it also includes four-cent educational supplement to support Talbot County Schools budget initiatives. And our overall property tax rate will increase 4.76 cents over FY24, which amounts to a 6.4% increase. The county tax bill for a home with a property assessment of $300,000 will increase from $2,230.20 to $2,373, which is a $142.80 increase, $120, which is attributable to the education supplement. And here we have an example of a tax bill with those rates. Okay, let me try this again.
There you go.
Okay. I have such a hard time because my pointer on my, my laptop is huge. And this one's tiny. Old people problems. I know, I know. It's just tiny. I'm trying to chase it around. Okay. Here you can see the property tax rates of Baltimore City and the 23 counties in the state of Maryland. This information came from the Maryland State Department of Assessments and Taxation website. As you can see, Talbot County, when I prepared this with the schedule from S-STAT, Talbot County has the second lowest property tax rate in Maryland. And since I've put this slide together, I've gone into Montgomery County's website to investigate because they actually dropped. And I knew they had made a significant investment in their school system in last year's budget. And I found that they, they don't call their education supplement part of their property tax rate. They have a bunch of different rates that they charge against their property tax rate. So actually, when you add just their property tax rate and their educational supplement, which I think they started for the first time last year, when you add those together, they are actually the third highest property tax rate in the state of Maryland. And even more than that, if you add all of those other little rates that they have on there, depending on what area of the county you live in. In comparison to other counties, Talbot County has the second lowest income tax rate in 2024. Fitch Ratings best describes Talbot County's income tax rate revenues when it said income taxes are a higher percentage of revenues than is true for most Maryland counties. This is particularly due to the very low tax environment compared with the rest of the state, which provides incentive for a small number of high-income earners with second homes to declare their income in the county. This is why Talbot County's income tax revenues are volatile and difficult to predict, and that is due to the small percentage of high-wage earners that claim Talbot County as their home. Our FY25 budget represents an increase in projections at $37 million, which is in alignment with levels that we've received for income tax revenues for the last several years. So for our general fund expenditures, we'll start with education expenditures. Education expenditures for Talbot County represent 37.7 of its total budget. This includes expenses for Talbot County Public Schools, Chesapeake College, and the Talbot County Free Library. Talbot County Public Schools alone represent 56% of the county's operating expenditures. Again, these are total general fund expenditures, and when you break it down to those are recurring operating expenditures every year, that's a significant portion of our budget. Maryland Blueprint Required Local Share Funding was increased by $1.053 million in FY25. In addition to the mandated funding, the county has included an additional appropriation of $2.6 million. Funding to support Talbot County Schools increased overall by $3.65 million above FY24 levels. By moving the increase in school funding to the educational supplement, the county is providing a more structurally balanced budget. Included in the CIP budget is $16.9 million in the capital project request for Chapel District, boy, there's a lot of C's in all of these, Chapel District Elementary School renovations, and an additional funding of $1.5 million for other capital improvement projects to be prioritized by TCPS. And while not appro, of appropriations to the schools, the county has included a new position this year for a school officer, a school resource officer supervisor in our budget, in our sheriff's office budget, which will enable the sheriff's office to ensure that each school always has proper coverage and a deputy is on-site during school hours. As you can see, public safety represents 22.7% of the total budget, along with general government at 10.7%. There are $2.9 million in capital outlay expenditures included in this budget. These are non-recurring expenditures, and the level of funding required for these types of expenditures can fluctuate based upon equipment and vehicles needed, as well as funding availability. The FY25 budget also includes an investment in county infrastructure of $27.5 million to be paid for with fund balance reserves. Personnel actions, let me bounce back one more. Personnel actions that were taken in this budget include a 3% cost of living adjustment and one step for employees. Also, as I mentioned, five new public safety positions and other benefit actions for public safety were taken. These will provide recruitment and retention opportunities for our public safety departments. Our total fund balance and rainy day funds. The fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2023, was $90.7 million, which grew $22.4 million from the end of FY22. At the end of FY23, Talbot County had $15.9 million designated as rainy day reserves. These reserves give the county less exposure to the risks associated with revenue and expenditure volatility, particularly in times of inflation or recession. And we are still experiencing elevated levels of inflation, and those increases are included in this budget. This strong fund balance is a result of the county's conservative budgeting methods, and those conservating, conservative budgeting methods were the guidance for staff and the formation of the budget that you have before you. And I think it's always good to end with this assessments. Moody's, when Moody's and Fitch reviewed the county's finances during the bond issuance that we had in 2022, it's kind of like our rating us on our budgeting methods, and I think it applies to this. I believe that it applies to this budget as well. Moody's said financially, the county is very strong and the management team is generally conservative in its budgeting. The credit strengths were low, long-term liabilities, and a manageable long-term capital plan, along with very strong reserve position. And with Fitch, Fitch's assessment of the county's financial resilience as being in the highest category is based on the combined strength of its fund balance position, its ample expenditure flexibility, and its strong ability to adjust revenues through policy action to counterbalance its historically volatile revenues. The county typically increases its property tax levy by the full amount allowed annually under the county charter. Both the property and the income tax rates remain the lowest in the state. And as our county manager stated in his opening comments, I think that it really speaks to how well we do with the amount that we have. So while we have these increases this year, we still are managing well with what we have. And I think that that's something for us to be proud of.
Okay.
That concludes your staff's presentation and request your consideration to introduce the proposed balanced FY25 general budget. Mr. Counsel, President, members of counsel.
Any questions?
No questions. I just want to thank Martha and her team and the staff that worked hard on the budget. It did seem a little grueling this year to get through it and get to this point, but thank you and the staff for all that you did to give us this budget for consideration tonight. Thank you.
And also for making it so clear and transparent. Thank you.
That's good.
I'll, I'll echo those thanks and, and extend it to, to really all the, the department heads with whom you've worked in getting us to this and, and the outside agencies as well. I think that you've clearly put a good system in place to, to lead them through this, to provide transparent input for all these things. I'm, I'm, I'm glad and too at the, at the process by which this council's worked in full public view in going through these deliberations with, with your advice all through this process. This has been, this has been, I think, the best process we've seen yet to date. And a large part of that is because of the way you've led us through this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Job well done. Everything everyone else has said, and just job well done.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
I, I will say, I have to give Caitlin, she has been a phenomenal, phenomenal partner through all of this. With the two of us, we've been able to conquer and divide with, we just, we not only have an excellent team at the top of finance, it trickles down to all of finance because when we were in gruellingly pushing this budget out, we have, you know, finance goes on in Talbot County, and we have an excellent staff that takes care of business there. So we don't have to worry about it. So we're, we're very grateful. And, and the department heads, I just can't say how awesome a team that we have here in Talbot County. Everyone gets along and they like each other, and they're, they respond so quickly. It's just very, I just have to pinch myself sometimes, and it's so good.
Yep, and I would agree too with my colleagues in what you said about Caitlin and the whole staff and everything. We'll try to put her on a pedestal a little bit, you know what I mean? That's okay.
She deserves it.
But now, you, you know, week in, week out for the last several months, you know, you guys have been hard at it, and we really appreciate it. I know it's been hard on family too, you know, so let's not forget them, that we appreciate the husbands and the kids and all that stuff that you have to deal with, you know, to get through these, you know, several months. And we really appreciate them too. So, you know, Mr. Stamp, I appreciate you. I appreciate you, you know, in, in the trenches with them, day in and day out too, you and Jessica and, and Susan. So we really appreciate you guys too with all your hard work and stuff.
Yeah, it's an honor to work with such a great team. We have a great council. You give so much support to our employees, our staff, our department heads. And Martha and Caitlin did step up, and our department heads are tremendous. Even, I mean, there's over 50 different folks that are involved in the budgeting process. And they work with us. They know that, you know, you all can't give everything to everybody they ask for.
Sure.
So they work with us and try to, to whittle it down. But yeah, we have a great organization. It's great to serve the community of Talbot County.
Yep, thank you. So, okay, at this time, do we need to make a motion to, to move forward?
Show of hands.
Or show of hands?
Yep, we'll start, start by reading the title.
Okay, yep.
An Act to Establish the 2024-2025 Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance.
And then a show of hands to
Yep, yep, yep.
Introduce. Introduced by counsel.
And this will be known as Bill Number 1553. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 7th, at 2:00 PM in this room and at 7:00 PM in the Easton Elementary School cafeteria located at 307 Glenwood Avenue in Easton.
Okay. That sounds good, counsel. Okay, so next, public comment. So anybody want to come on up? And I don't think we had a, a list out there or anything. I don't think we had a list out there or anything.
Yes, we didn't.
We do? Okay. Yeah, would you mind, Sarah, see if anybody?
Nobody.
Yep. No? Okay. Okay, huh? Okay. All right, then. So I guess we'll move on to council comments. I'll start with Dave.
I'll just give one more round of thanks to all our staff, all our department heads, council. I mean, it's been another great year to get through this process. Job well done by everyone, and looking forward to serving our county well with those funds a lot.
Yep.
Nothing further from me.
Yep.
Same thing, except I'd like to thank the staff for keeping Talbot County great and operating at a reasonable cost.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yep. Yep, and I would agree with all my colleagues that I really appreciate everything you've done, and that's about it tonight. Yep.
Council's next meeting will be Tuesday, April 23rd, at 6:00 PM. Council will be meeting beforehand at 4:30, and going in open session and immediately going into closed session to discuss matters as related to the statement for closing that meeting. Council will be meeting tomorrow night, I'm sorry, Thursday night, April 18th, at Chesapeake College jointly with the councils of Caroline Dorchester Kent and Queen Anne's in the Dorchester Room at Chesapeake College to discuss the Chesapeake College budget. With that said, if there's no other further business to be brought before us, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Okay, we got a motion, second to adjourn. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot.